Randy, this is Kerry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, Kerry. I got your number there. So, okay, now I just have a... Who was the last four? Seven one three two.
Marshall Lee.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The housekeeping is fun when we get such a large group. Well, Mayor, it's, we definitely have a quorum, so it's up to you if you want to start the meeting, or...
Yeah, you know what? If you can do me the favor, read the caption, just substitute the date and time to today's date and the time.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
The agenda of the regular meeting, City Council of City of Blue Island held remotely on Thursday, April 30th at 8:00 PM, as permitted by the Executive Order 2020-07, signed by Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker on March 16th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. To participate remotely, download the Zoom app or call 313-626-6799. The webinar ID is 850-5820-6597, with the password of 708411.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. Are we ready? Let's go. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic, for which it stands, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom of speech. Thank you. Roll call, City Clerk.
Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Fairanwald.
Here.
Fairanwald here, Hill.
Here.
Hill here, Mac. I know he's here. We'll come back. Carr.
Here.
Carr here, Cantellos Zelman. I see her there. You're muted. Cantellos Zelman here, Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here, Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here, Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here, Casadus.
Yeah.
Casadus here, Rita. Donahue.
Yeah.
Donahue here. Let me look over here to see if there's any recent people. Who is the last four? Seven four zero three.
That's Ronald Young.
Okay, thank you. Did we get Alderman Mac? Yeah, Alderman Mac is here. And then Alderman Rita.
Randy, do you hear me?
I do, Michael. I got you. He's here. Yeah, I see you.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Twelve present.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to number four, Presentation of General Proceedings. I need a motion for the council. If you can name who's making the motion, who's seconding it. Need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of April the 14th, 2020.
Donahue moves to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Who's second?
Alderman Hill.
All right, thank you. Roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number five, Mr. Clerk, could you read it, please, again with the change of date and time?
Yeah. Public comment shall be by email only. Persons interested in making a public comment must email their public comment to the rhozier@cityofblueisland.org by April 30th at 7:00 PM. Email public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by City Clerk Randy Hoiser.
Thank you very much. Moving on to number six, Report of City Officials. Oh, no comment at all?
No comments, right.
All right. We're going to move on to number six, Report of City Officials Under the Mayor's Business with number one, A Proclamation Regarding Motorist Awareness Program. And this is coming from a group called GWRA, Motorist Awareness Program Proclamation. It reads as follows. Whereas the members of the Goldwing Road Riders Association, GWRA, Motorist Awareness Program, MAP of Illinois, and other organizations continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness programs to the general public and to the motorist community of Illinois. And whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and whereas it is crucial that citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the state and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote motorist awareness and safety sharing the road with motorcycles, and will be reminding riders to be more visible to others. And whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed countless volunteer hours to their communities, and whereas all motorcyclists should join GWRA, MAP of Illinois, in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Therefore, I, Domingo F. Vargas, Mayor of the City of Blue Island, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May the 1st, 2020, to May the 31st, 2020, as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and encourage motorcycle awareness and safe motoring for all. I'll need a motion in a second.
Alderman Bellato, motion.
Do we have a second?
Alderman Hill.
Do we go roll call or just by consensus, Mr. Clerk?
You know, Kerry, I'm, it should be fine with a voice vote, right?
Absolutely. Just a proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, I move on to number two, A Proclamation, also known as Plows, Regarding Older Americans' Month, May 2020. And it reads as follows. Older Americans' Month, May 2020, a proclamation. Whereas Payless, Lamont, Orland, and Worth Townships include a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. And whereas Plows Council on Aging is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And whereas Payless, Lamont, Orland, and Worth Townships recognize the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities to promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas Plows Council on Aging can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by, one, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living; number two, involving older adults in community events and other activities; and number three, providing opportunities for older adults to volunteer, learn, and engage with others. Now, therefore, I, Domingo F. Vargas, Mayor of the City of Blue Island, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Older Americans' Month, and I urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. I need a motion in a second, please.
Alderman Blocker.
Alderman.
All right, thank you.
I would like to be able to second it if I might. I'm going to be a senior citizen in three months and 13 days.
You got it. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. On moving on to number three, let me make this following information. As you are aware, Council, I hereby have appointed Mr. Alan Stevo as the Seventh Ward Alderman to complete the term of office of former Alderman of the Seventh Ward, Alicia Slattery. That's number three. Moving on to number four, I would need a motion to approve the appointment of Alan Stevo as the Seventh Ward Alderman.
I'll make a motion to a table for our 30-day review to May 26th, council meeting.
All right, all right. We got a motion. We got a second. Any questions?
Donahue seconds the motion to table.
All right. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Yes, I have a question. This is Alderman Alexander.
Go ahead.
I want to know why were we, why are we in such a hurry to fill Alderman Slattery's seat? I know in the first ward, there was a vacancy for two years, and it was no hurry to fill that seat. I know a month ago, we did a referendum to reduce the number of Aldamens from 14 to seven. So instead of filling that seat, Alderman Clinker is doing a great job, and instead of filling that seat, we can use that money to go towards street repairs like the referendum stated.
All right. Thank you, Alderman, for your comment.
Alderman Clinker? Alderman Clinker?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, Alderman Alexander, thanks. That's exactly what I was going to say. I actually, after I got the email that Alderman Slattery resigned, I emailed the mayor explaining that I thought that I could continue to do it for the next year myself. I've been doing it for a year myself anyway. We are cutting down to one Alderman per ward due to that referendum, and we could use the cost savings. I think we're all going to be hit pretty hard with this COVID stuff, so we'd have decreased revenues across the table. So, my opinion is we should just leave it empty for the year.
Alderman Fairanwald, comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I'm in a, I'm kind of wondering why we're in such a hurry to table this. Currently, there are 14 seats, and one seat has been essentially vacant against the will of the residents and the voters of that ward. Unfortunately, they've had to pay for an Alderman who wasn't present. And I think it would be great if we could get that money back, frankly, so we could pay for an Alderman to fulfill the obligations that still exist. And I think it's important that, you know, we abide by the current rules, not regardless of what's coming up. So I am not pleased that we're tabling this. I think we should deal with it tonight and vote it up or down.
Alderman Zelman, I have a question. Did we have applications for other people to apply for this Alderman position?
I took people under consideration.
Mayor?
All right.
This is Kerry Horvath.
Yes, sir.
I do, I do want to advise the Alderman that the 30-day period began to run when you forwarded your appointment of Mr. Stevo to them on April 24th of 2020. The 30-day period does not expire on May 26th. The 30-day period expires May 24th. If they do not act within that time period, then you, as mayor, have the alternative of selecting a second person for your choice. I'm just putting that on the record right now so they understand that.
Thank you, Council.
This is Mark Scarlato. Can I please speak, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
That is not technically correct. The presentation of the statement to the council for its advice and consent occurs today. So the clock starts running as of today, and the council has 30 days to review the choice to see what it is that they like or don't like about the choice, and then ultimately vote on approval.
Mayor, I'm just going to read the statute to you. The statute... Mayor, this is Kerry Horvath again.
Go ahead, Council. Go ahead, read it.
65 ILCS 5/3.1-10-50E. And the relevant portion of the statute is Section E. And it says, "An appointment by the mayor, president, or acting mayor or acting president, as the case may be, of a qualified person as described in Section 3.1-10-5 of this code, to fill a vacancy in the office of Alderman or trustee must be made within 60 days after the vacancy occurs. Once the appointment of the qualified person has been forwarded to the corporate authorities, the corporate authorities shall act upon the appointment within 30 days." The operative word is forwarded. You forwarded that appointment on April 24th. There is a 30-day time period from that date. That time period expires May 24th. Mr. Scarlato has no authority with respect to the position that he's just stated to the city council, and I would suggest that he confer with election council if he thinks that the opinion, my opinion at this point in time, or my reading of the statute is incorrect.
Your reading of the statute is absolutely incorrect. Presentment to the council occurs when the council is in session and it is officially presented. The statute reads that way. Presentment cannot occur prior to the council being all together because that would be an OMA violation.
Mark, why don't you cite the statute? Why don't you cite the statute and the language in the statute that uses the word resentment to the council? And if you don't have that language, don't mislead the city council with respect to what the statute says. Now, my suggestion would be...
You just said.
You have a motion on the floor.
You said presented to the council.
I said forwarded.
But it's forwarded.
All right. Alderman Bellato.
Mark, I said forwarded.
Alderman Bellato, I have a question for Attorney Horvath. Attorney Horvath, I have a question because we're only arguing here a couple of days. They said May 24th, correct, Attorney Horvath?
Says May 24th. That is correct.
Then I'll amend my motion.
You must act by that day.
I'll amend my motion for a special meeting on May 22nd, 7:00 PM.
Alderman Fairanwald. First of all, you have a motion on the floor to table. All right. Now, are you making a motion to amend the motion to table?
Just to clarify, Attorney, I made a motion that was to table and reconvene on the decision on May 26th. I'm changing the date to May 22nd.
I second Alderman Bellato's motion. Donahue does.
Thank you.
Alderman Fairanwald, I'd like to say something?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you. First off, Alderman Bellato, thank you for amending that. Appreciate it. This, another skirmish here between two lawyers when we should just have one arguing over two or three days. Once again, I can't help but observe what an incredible waste of energy and time this is. I think that our current attorney, Kerry Horvath, has an excellent job of representing us, and we don't need these running gun battles in our city council meetings. And I don't like our time taken up this way, and I think it's counterproductive. Secondly, I would just like to say to the brother members of city council, do think about what's going to happen here now. Clearly, the mayor is going to appoint someone to this seat. I think that's pretty obvious that that's intention. And as I understand it, if we, if the council does not, you know, approve or permit the seating of Mr. Stevo, then the mayor will appoint someone else. I don't know who else that might be. I don't know if anybody else does. That choice may be more or less acceptable to any or all of you, but you're going to wind up, you know, we're going to have to accept one of those choices. You might want to take action. Sometimes, you know, what you know is better than what you don't know, and you know who you've got right now. One of these people is going to be an Alderman, quite clearly. You can postpone it if you want, but right now, you have the opportunity to take at least some control over this process and approve someone you know versus someone you don't know. And I'm not, again, I don't know whether you're going to like him any better or not, but that's the choice you got right now. Alderman Bellato, Alderman Fairanwald, I agree with what you said about we have to pick somebody, and we have two shots at this, only two bullets in the chamber. So, I'm well aware of that. I believe most of the council is. The vacancy of Slattery being there, a lot of discussions and stuff has come up about vacancies and stuff like that. But, no, I get what you're saying here, and I think a decision's going to be made one way or the other very soon. All right, just wanted to make the point.
Alderman Donahue, I hear. Mayor, could you provide a resume for Mr. Stevo so we could review it during this time period to see if he's qualified? I'd like to use this time to make sure we have a qualified person that we are selecting. Thank you.
I'll reach out to him. Thank you. I will.
This is Alderman Johnson. I thought he was an Alderman before, but I might be mistaken. But the thing is, is that running a ward by yourself is very, very hard if you're actually doing something. Like I said, I got the largest land ward, and it was very hard. So we talking about saving a few dollars, which I thank Clinker for doing the job that he's been doing. But it's very hard, and we're not saving that much money, you know, versus what quorum could have gave us in other entities. So I think we need to take this in consideration as Alderman Fairanwald spoke, that I'd rather deal with somebody I know the ins and outs of instead of just guessing. And Fred, I understand, you know, you want to take your time and make sure, but, you know, you got to look at the times, you know, what we got to deal with.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Clinker, one more time. Thanks, Alderman Johnson, for the ad away there. But just one more thing. I find myself, and I tell everyone that I talk to, I'm pretty lucky in the fact that I'm retired, and I have a lot more availability to people than the other Aldamens that are all working full-time jobs, which is another reason why I said that I think it's a good idea for just to leave it empty. And we're talking about, Alderman Fairanwald brought up about fairness to the people in the ward and all that stuff. I just want to bring out a point that the person that the mayor is nominating here received 47 votes a year ago out of 349 cast. So if we're looking at what's fair to the people of the Seventh Ward, I'm not quite sure if that's the best choice. Thank you.
Alderman Fairanwald, I'd like to just follow up on that if I might.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, Alderman Clinker, I certainly understand your point, and it's a good one. But I would, again, remind everybody that we frankly only have so much control over this. The mayor has clearly made a decision that he is going to fill this position. And again, my point about, you know, you've got somebody, at least a known quantity that you're talking about. The second thing also, Alderman Clinker, just a, you know, note from listening to Attorney Horvath read the statute earlier, I heard the words must and shall, not might or may. So I think that we actually don't have a choice.
You know, Alderman Fairanwald, once again, Alderman Clinker, right? That was my question when I did email the mayor, and I also CC'd the attorney, Horvath, that if it was possible to do this. I didn't, I got a response from the mayor saying he would take it under consideration. Now that you're saying that, I get that point. And as Alderman Alexander said, it's, you know, just because it's happened in the past, that we've had an empty seat for longer than that, you know, that doesn't make it right this time. So if he's got to appoint someone, I fully understand that he's got to appoint someone. But once again, like I just said, he got 47 votes out of 349 a year ago from the citizens of the Seventh Ward. I just am not sure if that's the right person for the job.
Okay. This is Alderman Alexander. Again, back to what I was saying. I don't see the reason for filling this seat. The referendum passed. It's gone from 14 to seven Aldamens. And as Alderman Johnson stated, this is just a few dollars that we're not going to save by not filling this seat. But the referendum passed. So why are we trying to fill this seat in such a hurry? I don't understand that. So Aldi, Mayor Vargas, I need you to please help me to understand why you're in such a hurry to fill this vacancy?
No, heard. Thank you, but there's a motion to second. I need a roll call on that, please.
So you're not going to answer my question, Mayor?
I've already made a decision. Thank you, Alderman.
That's, that wasn't my question. My question was, why were you in such a hurry to fill this seat when in my ward, in the first ward, it was a vacancy for two years? And there was not an appointment for that particular seat?
Alderman. Go ahead. There's a motion to second. Roll call, please.
On the motion...
Thank you, Mayor, for not answering my question.
On the motion to table, on the motion to table till 5:22. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Fairanwald.
No.
Fairanwald, no. Hill.
Yes.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Yes.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Absolutely not.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Mayor Vargas.
Aye.
Mayor Vargas, aye. Nine ayes and four noes. Excuse me. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yes, correct. Mayor?
Yes. We move on to number five, Mayor's Announcements. As you know, there's been quite a number of people who have been infected by COVID in our city. Some amongst our family members. If you don't know, it has actually hit my family personally. Specifically, my daughter, who's a nurse. So keep her in your prayers, and we keep everybody else who's been infected, not only here in Blue Island, but in our state and our country and in the world. Moving on to number two, regarding parades, and this is an issue, a theme that we've discussed through the task force, and we want to inform the council. Amongst the task force, we decided that Blue Island Police and Fire Department should, actually, we don't condone these parades that they want to have in our city. We will not participate in them. But again, we'll leave that up to the council if there's a special request that they need city council approval. So again, we're not going to say no as long as they're following traffic laws, and it doesn't get too out of hand, but I'll leave that up to the council. Next, there is a Make Noise in Blue Island, and it's for the following, make noise, or some noise in Blue Island to show our support for our first responders, our medical workers, essential employees, and for our community. It's a reminder, it's every night from 8:00 to 8:15 PM, and it's, let's make some noise, Blue Island. And then I've gotten some comments, some emails from people, and people have come across asking that all our elected officials, both on our federal, state, county, and local levels, try to assist us in getting masks and gloves and hand sanitizers, not only for for our residents, but for everyone, whoever can have access in a way to get in contact for that. I know some of you have, and I applaud you and I thank you. But again, it's a full-force effort for all of us to get the fight and to work together to hit this pandemic. It's something that's affecting all of us, and hopefully, hopefully, within the next month, we're out of it and move on with our lives as best as we can. We know, just like 9/11, this is going to be a change in our lives, and who knows what this is going to lead to us. So that's all I have on Mayor's Announcements. City Clerk, any business?
No business.
Any bids?
I have one bid this evening, Your Honor. I need a motion to approve a 2020 combination sewer cleaning and televising award recommendation for busy sewer for $175,829.70.
We will need a motion.
Alderman, this is Alderman Donahue. I'd like to table this motion till later time.
All right. It's a motion to table. Any questions? If not, I need a roll call on that motion.
Good.
Need a second.
Alderman Fairanwald would just like to ask a question.
Second.
Go ahead.
On the table, okay. Holly.
Alderman Fairanwald, ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to ask Alderman Donahue, what, what's the reason for wanting to table this now?
Um, so I'm, I'm, thank you, Alderman. Um, so we did discuss this in finance and even though it did come out amended. I'm still worried about the TIF revenues, specifically in TIF five. I saw a document, um, that has about fifteen other projects for TIF five. TIF five originally, uh, was supposed to help for the maintenance and operation of the, the two bridges. Uh, but now it's thrown to do all this other stuff. The biggest. I guess revenue generator of TIF five was the hospital. So without the hospital being there, I'm just worried, I don't, I don't want to do this, put this out for a while. I'm hoping three months, four months from now, we can revisit this. I'm just afraid with COVID. We're going to stretch ourselves too thin and there could be something that comes up in the meantime where we don't have the fun. So I'm just, I'm just looking out just for a small, a small time until we can maybe revisit this, say June, July. Maybe even August, um, when we have a better idea, um, where we are. Revenue wise, where we are with our city resources. And if there's going to be revenues coming back from the, the federal government, um, in the form of some type of bailout. So it's just really just, just want to hold off just for a little bit until we have a better idea of where we're at.
All right, thank you. That, that seems reasonable and I, I don't think I need to tell you this, but I'll just say that. Uh, I do think this is a pretty critical piece of infrastructure, uh, you know, maintenance that we, we really need to do. Uh, I watered my basement, uh, this, this morning from all the rain. Uh, but, but, uh, I understand your rationale, but I really, and I encourage us to, you know, bring this back up and any way we can move forward this, uh, I think it's important that we do so.
All right, there's a motion to the second, roll call. I've got a question. Another question. Go ahead.
This is, uh, Alderman Johnson. I got a question for Kerry, uh, Horvath. Uh, Kerry, is it possible that this money could possibly be used to help maybe in any situation like. As far as this pandemic is concerned? Or does it have to be strictly for, you know, that area?
You're talking about the TIF, the TIF revenue?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, uh, Alderman Johnson, this is Kerry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, are you referring to the use of the TIF revenue?
Yes, sir.
The TIF revenue can only be used for projects. Within the actual TIF district itself. Uh, it cannot be used for something with respect to, uh, the pandemic. Unless it were related to a TIF, an actual TIF project. Um, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but it is restricted, the use of the funds are restricted to projects within the redevelopment area.
Okay, um, I got a, uh, um, thank you, uh, Kerry, a question for, um, Alderman Donahue. Alderman Donahue, um, you know, because of our, you know, our system is so old, because we're older than Chicago. If a emergency would happen to, you know, come about, um, how will we go forward? I'm just saying, if we would, uh, table this.
I, I'm just, again, I'm just looking to table this for a little bit longer until we have a better idea of, of what, what we're actually looking at, big picture. So I'm not, I'm not talking six months to a year. I'm just looking at a month, two, three months. And then we revisit this when we have a better idea of what's, what's happening.
So there's a motion in a second?
On the motion to table, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman. Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Um, no.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, city treasurer, is he on or no?
No.
All right, and number one, approval of inter-fund transfers from unrestricted to restricted accounts. I'll need a motion in a second.
Donahue makes a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Carr.
Alderman Hill.
Uh, Alderman Carr, thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is a cash collections receipt report. Do we need a motion in a second for that?
No.
All right, and then the third, uh, treasurer announced, I don't have anything. Uh, Mr. Counsel City Attorney, anything?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. We're moving on to committee reports. Number one, community development committee.
Yes, Your Honor. We have a next meeting, May thirteenth. Unless something changes, May thirteenth at seven PM. I have a couple of ordinances out of here. The first one is ordinance twenty-twenty dash zero-one-five. An ordinance approving a special use to allow for retail and personal service establishment. I believe this is the jeans dry cleaner on Binsens, uh, that was going to, is going to be a Lopez Tire Shop. This went through zoning and planning.
Correct. You, you want to do the motion?
Yeah. Need a motion.
All right, do you have a second?
Second. Zelman, second.
Uh, who seconded?
Zelman.
Yeah, Zelman.
All right, thank you. Any questions? If not, roll call, please.
Uh, Alderman Fairanwald, one quick note.
This is Alderman.
There's a question by Alderman Fairanwald, go ahead.
Thanks. Actually, I just wanted to thank Alderman Bellato for moving this through. Uh, first came to my attention in, uh, Alderman Holly's in my ward. Um, that the cleaner was, uh, kind of up against it and, uh, they had this opportunity to move another good Blue Island business, the tire shop. They've been working real hard and they want to expand and this location wasn't quite zoned for them, but it was a logical use, so I appreciate your working with them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, we got a motion second.
Alderman Johnson with a question. Alderman, uh, Chairman Bellato, um, just wanted to ask a question, you know, you and I discussed about, you know, uh, having them have a report of disposal of the tires. And as well as how they're being kept and stored.
Did you get the email from, uh, they, they sent an email to you about, uh, Lopez Tires, uh, waste? They, they sent, uh, about a, yeah, so we got, we got a report from them. I haven't heard any from any other dealer in town.
Okay.
We got to follow back up, uh, at our next meeting, see if they got to hold anybody else, but I know for Lopez for sure, he's gotten, uh, the receipts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you both. Uh, roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next resolution I have is twenty-twenty dash zero-one-five, resolution authorizing city staff to conduct the sale of the property commonly known as one thirty-seven forty-seven Southwestern Avenue. Blue Island, Illinois with property index numbers twenty-eight dash zero-one dash two-zero-three dash zero-zero-nine dash zero. And twenty-nine dash zero-six one oh six zero four one zero 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 zero. This was discussed at a few community development meetings. Uh, there were several bids on the property. The bid that I believe Mark Miller, uh, is, is working with paid full price of the appraised value. This is the old Monarch Roofing property. Um, I don't know if Mark's on the line, he can explain it more. If not, uh, I know we've beaten this thing in our committee a few times. If anybody had any questions, I'll try to answer, but I know there were several bids on the property. I'll make a motion.
All right, you have a second?
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you very much. And if not, any questions, roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Don, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
That's all I have, Your Honor, and our next meeting, like I said, uh, is in two weeks, so.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, finance committee.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor. I have, uh, two sets of minutes to read really quick. Uh, first is from the meeting on April the twentieth. Uh, meeting was called to order at six oh five. Present were Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Clinker, Alexander and Johnson. Uh, Carol Green had a public comment. Uh, there was a motion to approve payroll. In the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents made by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Clinker. Uh, Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Clinker and Alexander voted to approve the payroll. Alderman Johnson voted no. There's a motion to approve the accounts payable made by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Clinker, Alderman Bellato. Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Clinker, Alexander voted to approve. Alderman Johnson voted no. There's a motion, uh, to approve an agreement with Doran Landscaping. Uh, motion, uh, for parking lots and to three parking lots in the business district. Motion was made by Alderman Bellato. Second by Alderman Alexander. Motion was approved unanimously. There was a motion to table proposal for maintenance of the Ball Diamond at the Retro Center made by Alderman Johnson. And the second made by Alderman Bellato. Motion to table is approved unanimously. There was a motion to adjourn at six forty, six thirty-four made by Alderman Bellato, second, uh, by Alderman Clinker. Meeting was adjourned. Uh, so from our meeting on four twenty-seven, uh, meeting was called to order at six oh five. Um, in attendance was Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Johnson, Alderman Clinker and Alderman Alexander. There's no public comment. Um, there was discussion of the quarterly expense report. The committee then took up a resolution for a full-time hiring freeze. There's a motion by Alderman Clinker, second by Alderman Bellato, Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Clinker and Alexander voted yes. Alderman Johnson voted no. Motion was carried. Uh, there was a proposal to twenty-twenty sewer maintenance. Uh, there's an amended motion made by Alderman Clinker, uh, second by Alderman Alexander. Alderman Bellato, Johnson, Clinker and Alexander voted yes. Alderman Donahue voted no. Uh, next, the committee, uh, reviewed a partial payout for New Street. Motion by Alderman Clinker, second by Alderman Alexander. Uh, the whole committee voted aye unanimously. Finally, the committee took up the final payout for the Grove Street resurfacing. Uh, motion by Alderman Alexander, second by Alderman Clinker. Uh, motion was approved unanimously. The meeting was, uh, adjourned. I forgot to write down what time it was. Our next meeting is May fourth at six PM. I do have a couple items, um. First is motion, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the accounts payable check proof for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. For the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty.
So we've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Alderman Bellato.
Thank you. If there are not any questions, roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
Aye. I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Johnson.
No, no.
I was gonna, I was gonna check on you there for a minute. Dex, Dex, Alderman Johnson, no.
Riding.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, I'd like to make a motion for approval, uh, payroll for April third, twenty twenty. Uh, for the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-eight cents. And also for April seventeenth, twenty twenty, for the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
So we got a motion. Do I have a second? Alderman Carr. Thank you. If not, if no questions, roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven aye, ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, I have ordinance number, uh, twenty-twenty zero-one-six. It's an ordinance to the city of Blue Island for County Illinois approving participation. In the interstate mutual aid and assistance program called the Illinois Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, Illinois One. Uh, this is similar to kind of what the fire department uses for, uh, MABUS. If there was an emergency in the city where our water department couldn't, um, attend. Other members of this, this group would be able to participate and vice versa, we would go help, help them. So I make, would like to make a motion to, uh, to approve.
You got a motion? Do I have a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
Thank you, Alderman Hill. If no questions, roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman. Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No. I mean, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Johnson, Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, and finally I have, uh, it's resolution number twenty-twenty zero-one-six. It's a resolution approving agreements with Doran's Landscape. For landscape renovation and maintenance at Western Avenue and Gregory Street, Old Western Avenue and Hundred Thirty-Fifth Place. And Hundred Twenty-seventh and Gregory Street for the city of Blue Island, Illinois. Uh, this is all coming out of the business district. This went through the community development committee before it went through finance. So I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, this item.
You got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second. Bellato.
Thank you. If no questions, roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanwald.
Aye.
Fairanwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac.
Aye.
Mac, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Eleven ayes and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
That's all I got. Thank you. Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, public health and safety committee?
Yep, uh, Alderman Clinker here. So we had our meeting on April twenty-first. I don't have a report. I'll have it at the next meeting. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for May nineteenth at six PM. Also, the one thing that, that we would like to bring out of this, um, Alderman Johnson brought this up. Also, the one thing that, that we would like to bring out of this, um, Alderman Johnson brought this up, is that, uh, we're putting together, actually the clerk put together a list of all the senior citizens in town for us. And Alderman Johnson suggested and the committee agreed that we should, as Alderman, try and reach out to these people to make sure that they're taken care of during this time. So I just got the list from Clerk Hoiser a few hours ago. Um, it's quite an extensive list. I'm gonna forward it off to all the Aldermen. And we're asking if you guys could each split it up or whatever, or call these people or just check on them to make sure that, uh, they're being taken care of. Um, so that's it. Our next meeting is May nineteenth.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Uh, municipal services committee?
Uh, yes, your honor. We had a meeting April the twenty-third. Present were Jim Poulstrow, Betty Harmeyer, Eric Alvarez, Alderman Mac, Alderman Fernwald, Alderman Rita and Alderman Carr. Absent were Bob Jackson and Ted Russenberg. Also present was Randy Hoiser, Alan Stevo, Carol Green and Kimberly Byrne. The meeting was called to order at six fifteen. There were, there were no citizens' concerns. Under public work, Jim Poulstrow presented his report. He also explained the mutual aid agreement for water operators. Alderman Fernwald asked about street repair scheduling and how this is financially impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. Jim Poulstrow explained that the city is now very limited. He went on to explain how workers are kept separated during the daily duties to limit personal contact. Under the water department, Betty Harmeyer explained that there are no delinquencies or red tags going out to citizens because of the coronavirus pandemic. Under the John D. Rita Recreation Center, the rec, the rec center has been closed due to the pandemic. There was a contract from Sports Field to maintain the ball field, presented and discussed. Motion to prove by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Mac. All in favor, motion carried. Proposal was forwarded to the finance committee. Under the Meadows Golf Course, there was no report. The golf course has been closed. Alderman Carr noted that Governor Pritzker had approved the reopening of the golf courses with some restrictions earlier that day. And I believe the golf course will be opening tomorrow. Under Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez gave an update on ongoing projects. Alderman Rita emphasized that the city must closely monitor projects. Since in light of COVID nineteen pandemic, the city will most likely be running short of funds for large projects. The partial payout for New Street was discussed. There was a motion by Alderman Fernwald, second by Alderman Mac to approve payment as the work was previously completed. Voice vote taken. Alderman Fernwald, Mac and Carr voted aye. Alderman Rita voted no. Motion carried and payment invoice was referred to the finance committee. There was further discussion regarding the opening of new projects by Robinson Engineering. Alderman Rita felt that projects and their relative importance should be brought to Jim Poulstrow's attention before they are sent out to bid. It was requested by Alderman Carr that perhaps a written procedure should be developed so that all parties would be on the same page. After much discussion, it was concluded and agreed upon by Jim Poulstrow and Eric Alvarez that projects would be discussed and be brought back to municipal services before going out to bid. A proposal by Green Plum Garden Design to maintain the water gardens in the fifth ward was discussed. Eric Alvarez had sent a letter to the M W R D requesting that the rain gardens be sodded over with appropriate grasses that could be mown. The general assumption is that the city will not hear back from the M W R D for several months. And in the meantime, those gardens should be maintained and not allowed to grow wild. There was a motion by Alderman Mac, second by Alderman Fernwald to approve the proposal. All in favor, motion carried. The proposal was sent to the finance committee. There were no Alderman concerns. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Mac. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-three. Our next meeting will be May the twelfth at six P M.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Uh, judiciary committee? Anybody?
Uh, no reports at this time, your honor. I don't, I'm not sure when Chairman Rita plans to schedule the next meeting, but she'll have that this, the next time we meet.
All right. Thank you. Um, we move on to number seven. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
Yes, this is Alderman Hill. Uh, starting May, starting May first, the governor of Illinois and the mayor of Chicago, Illinois required that the wearing of masks and asking that the citizens who can make masks, please do so for those who can not afford to buy them and to donate masks. And I would like to know if it's impossible for us here in Blue Island to adapt that principle and ask the citizens of Blue Island, for those who can, uh, make masks to do so. Uh, I would like to call it make a mask save a life. And Blue Island, in beginning as well, as May first, I would like to do that starting May first. And I think by giving, it would show that, uh, we are giving city and may God bless America to show that our patriotism and we are working together as one, uh, body helping others through this monstrous virus. And that we can defeat it by working together.
Thank you, Alderman. We will pass the word on. Thank you.
Alderman Fernwald.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'd like to recognize Alderman Hill for what he's doing and thank him. That's a great project. Lots of people need masks. And also just to mention to folks listening in, in addition to, uh, buying or getting masks, there are some online resources for making your own masks that are quite simple, don't require any sewing or anything like that. So I just Google search that if you need a, a mask quickly, uh, there's, there's a quick way to do that. Uh, and then secondly, I just, uh, and not to slight any other Aldermen, lots of people are really helping out at this time, but I just was involved with Alderman Johnson recently in a project that he did to distribute food. Um, and he put together some real nice packages and some food went out about a week ago. Uh, which he just gave me a few boxes to distribute. I did zip nothing and he gave me credit for it, which, uh, didn't have to do because Alderman Johnson deserves all the credit for that one. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Alderman Johnson. Um,
Yes, sir.
I just want to give out some, some thank yous, if I may, um, uh, mayor. I want to thank Early Wa, I want to thank, uh, this guy, uh, Early Walker. He's the CEO of W W, uh, All Area Towing in Dixmoor. And my state rep, uh, thirtieth district, Will Davis. He gave me five hundred masks and two hundred and fifty pairs of gloves that I've already, um, given out. Um, I started it, um, actually Tuesday and he gave them out. So I went to my state rep and asked for something and he gave it to me. We have to stick together, you know, everybody got the pitch in. Everybody need to actually ask the congressmen, they state reps, um, you know, to, to, to help us in this time because they got direct connections to money and Springfield as well. Um, the second thing is, is that, um, I want to, uh, send a shout out to Paul who owns Country House Restaurant off of, uh, fifty-four hundred West Hundred and Twenty-seventh Street in Alsa. I'm gonna give you, everybody a phone number. It's seven zero eight, three eight nine, four six one eight. He's coming out of his own.
Repeat it again. Repeat it again.
Seven zero eight, three eight nine, four six one eight. It's called the Country House Restaurant. For every senior citizen that's in the city of Blue Island, if they would call them, not only is their meal free, so is the delivery. And his name is Paul and he only asks one thing. If people are and can do is to hit his GoFundMe page, that Country House Community. Because already he came out of a hundred and fifty thousand out his pocket, not only feeding the residents of Blue Island, but Robbins and Alsa as well.
God bless him and everybody else who does the same. Thank you.
And the last thing is, um, I want to give a big shout out to Kathy and Mark Keener for, uh, giving me boxes of cereal and magazines as I prepared, prepared the boxes for the senior citizens. Uh, not only in my ward, but other wards as well, as well as the masks went out in other wards as well, too. Um, Brian Anderson and Shepherd Hope and, um, and, uh, Alderman Fernwald. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Carr. Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Alderman Carr. I just wanted to give a shout out to one of our own citizens, uh, Maricela Flores. She has made, um, over two hundred, over two hundred and fifty masks that she has given away to anyone that needs them. So she's out there, she's making them. She's not charging people.
Yes, let's congratulate her and everybody else who's doing the same. Thank you.
Hi, this is Alderman Hill. One more thing. Uh, I don't know if you guys are aware of Twenty-Eight Mile Distill Company who makes, uh, hand sanitizer?
Yes.
I approached them and got them to donate hand sanitizer for the Blue Island Police Department as well as the fire department.
Yes, we did receive it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alderman Bellato here, mayor.
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to, um, wish happy birthday to one of the constituents, Rose Beretta. She turns ninety years old on May ninth.
Congratulations. Many, many more.
The family is going to do a community parade, um, just around the block over there. Uh, I don't have a date yet. And I'd like to thank, uh, our attorneys for looking into our business development funds, uh, question. Many businesses reached out to the community development committee, um, myself, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Holly, a few others, Alderman Clinker about if there was anything that can be done. Obviously, we know now, um, nothing can be done with that account. It has to be used for capital improvements or maintaining Western Avenue. However, in the future, if we do decide to create something like that for future use, we're by all means we can. But right now, we can't, uh, use the city funds in that account for, for grants or loans, um, to the businesses. If anybody else asks questions like that, we got clarification. Uh, Kerry Horvath, Kelly Burke put an email together and, uh, we forwarded back to the people that, uh, have been asking us. So I'd like to thank them for the help with that. And then also, um, back to what I've just been saying, the last few meetings, uh, support our businesses. Uh, at least three times, over and over again, to the same ones, um, I've been supporting. I've run into other Aldermen. I know Alderman Johnson, we ran into each other at the masses the other day, too. So I know you guys are out there supporting businesses, um, uh, whatever you can do. That's what they're doing to hang on right now. That's how we can help them, is support them and push anybody else to also support our local businesses in town here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that announcement, Alderman. Uh, you've been very supportive on that. And we've got to continue spreading the word, not only to our elected officials, but to the residents of Blue Island and the surrounding neighbors to continue supporting our local businesses. Thank you. Any, if, if anyone else? If not, I need a motion for adjournment?
Alderman Hill.
Do I have a second?
Alderman Zelman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Be, be safe, everyone. Be safe with this pandemic. Thank you and let's stay together. Blue Island strong.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.